Good evening. Today is October 8th, 2015. This is the meeting of the Hyde Park School Board of Education. And may I have a motion to enter exec session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to employment, future employment of particular person or persons, collective bargaining, negotiations, and the employment of a particular person?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We're now in executive session. At this time, may I have a motion to return to open session, please?
So moved?
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one agenda modification for tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, the presenter for the summer school is ill and could not be here, so we were going to put that on a October 22nd agenda. I have a motion to adopt the agenda as modified.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? We didn't move up the... Oh, maybe I have to get out of here. Wait, let me just re... Sorry. I have my board docs up from this afternoon. I don't know if... I want to make sure I got the right thing. What I was looking for, I thought it had been moved up, but I will just welcome...
Do it as pride.
In pride, yeah. I welcome Garrett as the student representative for the student on the school board. He was elected on Friday. Is that what it was, Friday?
Correct.
Yep. And I think you've met everyone except Gary and Jeff. Yeah, okay, great. There's an item later on, but I thought, you know, you're sitting there, people are going to say, "Who's that kid there? You don't look like a kid, though."
Yeah, no.
Yeah, I could slip out of here, and nobody would notice.
All right. So moving back here. We have pride.
Okay. Well, it seems like eons ago, but homecoming was an excellent evening, beautiful evening. Our team didn't do so well, but we're on our fourth quarterback. But it was a wonderful evening. And we also had the ribbon cutting and the dedication and naming officially of the Oval Office. And, you know, a shout-out to Monica Rallier, who provided the last-minute decorations to make the event more festive. And at that event, we also recognized all of the donors who made the concession stand possible. So many of them were there and were recognized. So it was a beautiful evening. I'll say that we have a superstar in our golf team, our soccer team. Our boys' soccer team is doing really well. I don't know if Dan can fill in some other things when I'm finished as for any specifics, but I think I got the two teams that are doing really well, and the others are just having good seasons. We had a very special event this past week, and that was the 75th anniversary of the Violet Avenue Elementary School. And that was in conjunction with it being officially on the National Register of Historic Places. So we had some good press on that. Deanna Gonzalez did a phenomenal job organizing the event, her and her committee. The Facilities and Operations Department did a splendid job on setting up the venue, and we had gorgeous weather. Most notable was that David B. Roosevelt was our keynote speaker. The students at the end thoroughly enjoyed meeting him. We also had a number of other dignitaries and politicians with us and who also gave us gifts at this event. DeeDee Barrett gave us a proclamation in honor of the 75th anniversary and included in that the addition of the school on the National Register of Historic Places, and it was nicely framed. It will be predominantly hung in the building. Mark Molinaro spoke. He did an absolutely amazing job, really engaging the students. Lots of congratulations. And he gave us a document where this is October 5th is officially declared Violet Avenue School Day in Dutchess County. Todd Tancredi, the supervisor of the town of Poughkeepsie, gave us also a proclamation that salutes Violet Avenue on their 70th anniversary and rededication. We had Tom Scaglione from Governor Cuomo's office, and he read the letter of congratulations in recognition of the 75th anniversary and place on the National Register of Historic Places. And Sue Sarini came a little late, but she did arrive, and she also brought with her a proclamation. We'd like to thank Patsy Costello of the Hyde Park Historical Society. We reached out to Patsy to see if she, in her network, could contact some of the students who actually graduated from Violet Avenue School many, many years ago. And we had about a half a dozen, and we asked them to stand and be recognized. We had several retired teachers also who stood and were recognized. And of course, the students did a beautiful job singing the Violet Avenue song. The President's Men gave a performance at the end. And we'd also like to thank our former board president, Sharon Mattias, who works for the Culinary Institute of America. And they provided the refreshments for the reception for the invited guests afterwards, so...
They were really good.
Yeah.
If I might just say one thing. The building's absolutely beautiful. I think it's a really pretty building. My thought occurred to me that in 2007, when the vote went to restore the buildings in Hyde Park, it occurred during a snowstorm, and the vote passed by 42 votes, as I recall. And there was a little controversy over that, but I think everybody, once the work was done, said, you know, "That was a good thing to do." So it's a beautiful building. Appleton's a beautiful building. Hyde Park Elementary is the same, so it's really... It's a good thing that passed.
Yeah. Just a few other additional items. I don't have the details on how... On the selection process, but in the recent special edition of the Hudson Valley, Best of the Hudson Valley, our high school teacher, Kate Franklin, was named best teacher of the county.
Cool.
Yeah. Former graduate, 2010 graduate, Rachel Sleeder placed third in the Adirondack Marathon. She's quite the runner. She spent three years on our track team, so congratulations. They mentioned several times that she's a 2010 graduate. And...
And she's a schoolteacher.
And yes, and she's a schoolteacher. Yes, not for our district, but maybe we can snag her back here. Deb Kravchak, who recently received... Recently earned her PhD, is also now part of a teaching fellowship in STEM education, which is sponsored by the Regeneron Pharmaceuticals in Tarrytown, New York. And the STEM Leadership Center is a collaboration between Regeneron, NASA Endeavors, and the Teachers College through the U.S. Satellite Laboratory. It was a competitive process, and this award confers Dr. Kravchak a 16-month professional development experience to only 10 teachers. And so we congratulate Deb Kravchak. And that concludes...
Well, that's quite a lot.
Yeah, that was a lot.
Actually. All right. And do you have anything for your superintendent's report?
Yeah. For the superintendent's report, a couple of things. We now have the surveillance cameras at District Office, this building, so if you're entering and exiting the building, we have the surveillance system up and running. So as you'll see in your journal tomorrow, you're on candid camera every time you're coming in and going out of the building. And last year, the district... Oh, HPTA, they had their golf tournament last Saturday. I don't have the exact number of what they raised. A lot of our staff members participated in the golf tournament. All of their proceeds go to the local libraries. And I'm not sure if some of it goes to scholarship or if it's their other fundraisers, but they did better than last year. I'll get you the exact number. I think it was a little chilly that day, but they had a great turnout and exceeded their goals. The HPTA is also offering a defensive driving class on November 7th to staff members, all staff members and their families. It is first come, first served, and that information will be posted on our website. I have two documents that I'm going to hand to the board for the first time, and I'll explain the documents. I'll also explain what we're going to do to follow up. A number of years ago, I realized that we do not have any kind of a public relations brochure that we can give to business owners, realtors, anybody looking to come to our area, an informational brochure about our schools. So over the course of last year, we worked with the BOCES people in the PR contract that we have to develop this brochure. We had it vetted with a number of staff members. You can't capture everything, but we think we captured quite a bit. Certainly, it's something that we can revise through over the years. What I am planning to do is have a community meeting where we invite the Chamber of Commerce and all the realtors and basically have an open session where we distribute these brochures and we have an opportunity to speak with them directly and then be able to place these in prominent locations throughout our community. I also now have an intern who is working free of charge, who will create a video called "Our Schools, Our Town." And we anticipate the... I don't want to put too much of a timeline, but, you know, definitely by spring, she's going to be putting together a professional-quality video for our district. And her name is Amy Maxwell, and yes, she is the daughter of Barbara Marine, one of our administrators. The second item is our parent involvement brochure and plan. The district leadership team worked on this last year. It is now finalized. And what we want to be able to do is put this in registration welcome packets, have it available on our desks, get it to the PTAs to distribute. But it's just a concise little document about opportunities to volunteer in the school district. It includes our parental involvement policy and a listing of administrators. So we will be distributing this to the schools and also especially to new registrants. But both these items are pretty much hot off the press. And that's superintendent's report. And we'll put links to these documents on the website. And the town of Hyde Park has already asked for a PDF copy so that they can also put our brochure on their website.
Just looking at the district opportunities for involvement, there's nothing that I can see anyway. I'm actually volunteering in the classroom.
That's the school-based. It's divided between district opportunities for involvement and school-based, and it's volunteering in the schools. And that includes, you know, any location in the school's classrooms. I mean, we can... They're not... We didn't publish multiple copies. We can...
Have these been sent out yet?
No.
Good. I want to get the phone numbers corrected. That's my cellphone number. I don't want my cellphone number.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, that should be my home phone number.
Home phones, not cell phones.
Yeah, home phones, not cell phones, please.
Good catch.
Yep.
Mine also.
So home phones, not cell phones, and I've got two middle initials that are incorrect, and Steve Mittermeyer spelled improperly.
I'll go by Steen, though.
I like Steen. That's kind of...
Steen.
Might think about changing.
That way, when they call, you know where it came from, and you can say, "He's not here."
So yes, no, these haven't been distributed. Great. Good catch.
That is my cellphone, not a home phone.
So you want the home phone. Okay. I'll double-check all these. Great.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it? Well, for the moment, we've all been waiting for. We're now going to have the external audit report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Kennedy. I'm a partner with the accounting firm O'Connor Davies. And this is... I'd like to introduce Leslie Tillotson. Leslie was the engagement manager for the audit of the district, and we're happy to be here to present the results of our audit tonight. So you should have three documents. I think you have them in electronic form right now. The hard paper copy form... Hard paper copies are in the building somewhere. We're just trying to identify where. But we have concluded the audit. And basically, what I'll share with you is there's three documents. There's a financial statement itself. There is a management letter with just several comments, and then there's the extra classroom report. So in speaking about the financial statements themselves, and I'll be brief, I'll share with you that it's basically a 90-page document that consists of all the financial statements, all the fund-level financials for the district, as well as the notes to the financials. But there's also discussion of management discussion and analysis as well, which is management's analysis of how the year went. There's also two other... There's an audit opinion in there, and I'll share with you, that was an unmodified opinion that we rendered, which is also known as the auditor's clean opinion, that your financial statements are presented fairly. There's also a report on internal controls, and that was a favorable report as well. And then a report on your compliance with major programs, because as you're aware, you have approximately $3 million in federal funds that you receive, and that you have to report on how that money is used. I think next what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Leslie for a brief discussion on the general fund, which, as you're aware, the one fund that you can actually control. So Leslie, would you...
I'm on page 60 of the report. This is the comparative schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget versus actual. The first column you have is your original budget, which is your voter-approved budget. Second column is your final budget, which includes any budget amendments or budget transfers. You have your actual column, your encumbrances, and your variance between final budget and actual. Total revenues for the final budget were $85.3 million. Actual came in at $84.8 million, leaving you with a slight shortfall of about $492,000. Your total expenditures, final budget, were $83.4 million. Actual were $78.9 million, leaving you with about $4.3 million of budgetary savings in the expenditures. Your net change in your fund balance was a slight decrease of about $24,000. The final budget anticipated to use approximately $3.9 million. So at the end of the year, June 30th, 2015, the district had budgetary savings of $3.9 million. And ended the year with a fund balance of $16.19 million. And I'm going to turn to page 59. That $16.9 is broken down into four categories. You have your non-spendable, which are your prepaid expenses of $1.2 million. You have your restricted fund balance, which are to be used for certain purposes. The board designated about $9.3 million. You have your assigned, which is what you designated for next year's budget of about $3.2 million. And your unassigned was $2.4 million, and that represents about 2.75% of your next year's budget. So the district is in compliance with the 4% mandate by New York State.
I think what I'll do is I'll remind you that last year, your unassigned fund balance was about 4.5%, so you had just exceeded it. So obviously, it's favorable that you're in compliance with that this year. I mentioned before that another report that we've issued is what's referred to as a management letter. We met with the audit committee a couple weeks ago and went through all... I think we had maybe four comments. What I can share with you is that there were no material weaknesses identified in internal controls or significant deficiencies. We did have four slight other... We call them other matters, which I won't go through at this point because we went through in detail at that meeting. We also have certain required communications that we share with you when we have the opportunity to meet like this, and I'll just go to that analysis right now. You don't need the page to it. But I think you should be aware of our responsibility, and I think I've communicated that. We're here to render an opinion on your financial statements, and we have, and it's been an unmodified opinion. We would have to inform you if there were any disclosures that require sensitive judgment calls, if you will. And there are certain things regarding OPEV. You called that term, Other Post-Employment Benefits. Certainly, there's actuarial assumptions involved in that as well. We encountered no difficulties in the performance of the audit, and I want to thank Greer and Linda for the courtesies extended to us during the audit. Thank you very much. There were no uncorrected or material misstatements that were identified. We didn't have any disagreements with respect to any communications during the audit. In addition, we encourage, certainly if there's any new pronouncements that are out there or other communications or gap issues that occur during the year, we encourage you to reach out to us. We're available. My cellphone appears... Or our cellphones appear on our emails. Feel free to call us, but in no way does that jeopardize our independence, because as you're aware, we need to remain independent in appearance and in fact to render an opinion. So that's what I wanted to share with you. I want to see if anyone had any questions.
Any of the members have questions? I think we went over pretty much the... At the last meeting.
Scruciating detail?
No. So if there's no further questions, thank you very much. Thank you for being patient and waiting for us to get back into the room. And if you have homework to do, you can leave.
Okay. Tell the students.
Thanks, Tom and Leslie.
Thanks. Take care. Thanks.
You, too.
Okay. So we are now at 6.4, which is the calculation of taxes without the alternative veterans' exemption. Linda, thank you.
I don't know if this is... Oh. You just have to scroll through this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Set up. Here we go.
There you go.
So when I presented on the tax levy in August, I was asked to show what the tax rates would have been if we didn't have the alternative veterans' tax exemption for this year. So that's what I did. I only have two slides. I'm actually going to go to the second slide first. This slide, it actually shows the difference between what actually happened, because we do have the exemption, and how things would have been if we didn't. So in the top left, you can see that in total, we have a difference in taxable assess amount of $15.4 million. That's the amount of the exemptions in total for all of our towns. Right next to it, on the top right, it shows in the first column what our actual tax rates are with the exemption and what they would have been without. So then at the bottom, you can see for a home with a taxable assessed value of $250,000, the... Our taxpayers are paying $84.63 more if they live in Hyde Park, and $52.47 more in the other towns.
All right. Linda, could you just point out, because of equalization rate, that that...
Oh, yes.
$84.63 is exactly the same as the $52.47.
Yeah. Because of the equalization rate, a home in Hyde Park with a taxable assessed value of $250,000 is considered by New York State to actually be valued at almost $400,000. So that's why the amount is more. If we were using the equalized rates instead of the taxable rates, then all... The difference is $52.47 for all homes.
Thank you.
Because that's... The equalization rate is 62.
It's 62. Mm-hmm. Right? And...
So if we did a multiple, it would come out to... It would come back down to 59.89.
Well, you could do it two ways. We could take the $250,000 and divide it by .62. I think that's around $400,000. Or we could decrease the... We could show what the equalized value is if a home that has an equalized value of $250,000 in Hyde Park would pay $52,000.
That's why the Hyde Park rate is higher than the other town.
Yes. Because of the equalization rate. I'm going to go back to the first slide. This slide just shows what was estimated last year before the board adopted the exemption. The board chose to go with the default rates. That's the amount that's in the middle. Based on the estimates from last year, we were assuming that taxpayers would pay about $83 more per year, or $133 in Hyde Park, if they had the taxable assessed value of $250,000. In the last column, you can see that's $52.47. Are there any questions about this? No, you don't have any more?
You answered it.
Okay.
Do we know... Do we know how many homes are involved in this?
I know how many parcels.
Okay.
I can tell you in just a moment. Well, some people might qualify for more than one, because there is the war zone exemption. There's one for combat zone and for disability. But in total, we had 1,304 properties that had some type of exclusion.
And in some cases, those may be the same property...
Yeah. In some cases, they might be more... Or might be the same, I'm sorry.
Could be the same property for multiple extensions.
I did ask for a breakdown from the county, but they haven't been able to provide it yet.
Okay.
That's for all the towns?
That's for all the towns. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just... I think it's important to point out, because was it more than a year ago? When did we actually start the discussion on this?
More than a year ago.
More than a year ago, yeah.
Right? Yeah. And, you know, a few of us just asked a rather simple and important question, like, how much would it cost? Because that was kind of an important fact to know. And, you know, this is exactly the kind of information I was looking for, and I think we kind of had it roughly when we made our decision. And, you know, I was happy to vote for this, and I'm glad we were able to do it. But you can see that absent the information, and I know, I think, I don't know if it's any school district or town, and certainly a town may not... The tax rates wouldn't be as much, but, you know, I know one municipality in Dutchess County went for the maximum, and once you go all the way out, there's no going back. You know, you kind of... You can always go up, but you can never drop back. And, you know, you can see the danger... And, you know, you can see the danger in, you know, just doing something without knowing what the financial impact is gonna be. And again, it's not the financial impact to the school district. We get the same money. It's the financial impact on the other taxpayers. And it was really important to understand that, um, you know, and, uh, you know, again, it was the right thing to do, and I was happy to do it, um, for the, for the veterans who gave so much for, for serving our country. But, you know, sometimes you blindly roll into something and not realize, you know, the impact you actually have on a lot of other folks financially and maybe unintentionally. And so I'm, I'm glad we, we kind of took the conservative, uh, approach and went with the default. But, you know, um, some people might object and say that, well, you know, in Hyde Park, eighty-four dollars, you know, on a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house is, is too much. It's not for me, I'm happy to do it, but, you know, that, that's the thing we had to understand. So it's, it's good to see this. So I think it's, uh, you know...
And the, the first three columns, well, actually, the first four columns, those are all from last year's estimates. And that's exactly what it was. Um, Wayne didn't have any of the real information because it wasn't available.
I know, and that, you know, that was, you know, that was what was so, to me, so offensive about the, the way it was, you know, kind of came flying out of Albany. Look, veterans, we're gonna let school districts do this, but they don't tell you how you're gonna, how, how, how will we be funded or provide the information so that boards, uh, whether it's a town board or whether it's a Board of Education can make an intelligent decision because it's, it impacts all the taxpayers. Um, you know, so it was, it was really important to understand. So it's, it's good to have this and, you know, you know, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with what we did. But I also realize it could have been very risky if we did something else, not really having all the information. And it could have been very expensive and, uh, for a lot of people, and it would have been a, a, a really bad situation probably, so...
Okay.
I think there was a good, good, good balance.
Any, any other, any other question? Other than, you know, this really should have been funded by the governor.
Yeah.
But, uh, other than that, uh, thank you, thank you very much, Linda.
Thanks, Linda.
Uh, brings us to public participation. May I have a motion to enter public participation, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Anybody would like to address the board, please? Step to the mic. If you could state your name, just so we know who we're talking to, that'd be great.
Hi, my name's Michael Mayer. I have, uh, two children currently in, uh, the school district. And I'd like to discuss an incident that happened on a school bus yesterday involving my son. My son was choked on a bus by another student. So when I asked for information from your administrators, I got stonewalled the whole way. Greer, can I call you Greer?
Sure.
I tried to get in touch with you.
I did not receive any ma...
To no avail.
Okay.
Okay? And I think it's, I think it's great that you, uh, bring up the point of, uh, cameras and surveillance, surveillance. Because supposedly there's a, uh, camera on the bus, but it wasn't working. All right? Everywhere I turned for an answer to what's gonna happen with the child, the child who choked my kid, I got stonewalled. Disciplinary actions and everything else. I do not understand why you will not tell me what happens to this child. What actions are being taken against him? I'd like some answers.
It, the...
Okay.
Go ahead.
The way this works, you get to say everything you want to say. You get to sit down. Somebody else speaks, they get to sit down. We close public participation, and then we answer. If, if it became a back-and-forth discussion, it just would take too much time.
I understand that. But the problem is...
We will answer you.
Listen, 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 let me speak.
Okay.
For eight hours today, I have gone through your whole administration. And everybody keeps pushing me to this person and that person and this person. No answers from nobody. My child was choked by another kid. And you, you know what your, you people's answers are? We can't tell you what it is. We can't tell you what we're gonna do. We can't disclose that information. Are you kidding me? You're here to protect my child.
We will answer you when the...
Do you want me to sit down and then get up and sit down?
No, if you're done, if you want to say anything else, that's fine. Uh, you can speak as long as you want. It doesn't look like anybody else wants to get up. However, the procedure is you say what you want to say.
I don't care about your procedures.
You, you, you sit down, and then we answer.
Sir, so listen to me.
I'm just trying to tell you how you're gonna get your answer.
By another child.
If you want to get an answer, we have to get out of public participation. If, if you want an answer from us...
So in other words, again, you're not gonna answer me?
If you'll just, if you'll just sit down.
Okay.
Thank you. It's, 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 and it's not you, and it's not this incident, this is the way our process works. I'm just telling you the way our process works. Fine. Does anybody else like to address the board? May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Now, would anybody like to respond?
Oh, I will. Um, first of all, I, I'm very sorry to hear that your child was choked on the bus. Uh, secondly, I have no messages on my desk.
I would take it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, so the, okay, just so we know, so it was redirected to another supervisor.
It started with the principal. To no event, uh, assistant principal. And up the ladder, so I tried to get to you, and that was about as far as I got.
Okay. What, what, what child, what school does your child attend?
Haveland.
Haveland. And so the question you're asking is what discipline was given to the student who choked your student? And under the federal laws of the family, uh, FERPA laws, uh, we cannot disclose that. What we can guarantee you...
No, it's not, it's the law. No, sir, it's the law.
Yeah.
No, it's, we're not gonna go into a debate about this. I'm just gonna defend the legal responsibility of the school district. And, what, no, let me, let me finish, 'cause my turn now, you had yours. The, the federal, the federal, no, the federal government does not allow us to disclose, as much as we would probably like to, because as a parent, I would feel just like you do. Okay, I would. The federal government does not allow us to release records or discuss what's going on with other students with other parents. That's the, that's the law. But, but, but can I offer you a piece of advice? You can certainly, and I would advise you if you're that, you know, if it's seriously, and I would be concerned about it, you, you are not precluded from approaching law enforcement about it.
Oh, no, you know, obviously, you've all been informed of this.
No, I, I, this is the first I heard about it. First I heard about it. I, I'm not gonna argue with you because you're, you're not listening to what I'm saying, so I'm done.
You don't listen to what I'm saying.
I ju, I did, I listened and I explained. No, I understand that. I understand that, and I, I feel terrible that it happened. And this is the first I heard about it when you walked to the podium. But I'm, what I'm just saying to you is that we have legal responsibilities. We can't, because let's...
Responsibilities of protecting children.
No, no, no. If, let's, 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 let's reverse the roles. Let's say your son was the one who did the choking. Okay, and then let, and that's, no, that's, and that's great that you did, but let's just, let's take this down the road. If we were to disclose what we did to your son from a disciplinary point of view, in that scenario, you'd have the right to sue us under FERPA.
I'm not asking.
All right. I gotta have to stop this. With, this is not a discussion. This is not, you may, you may come in and talk to this, that... No, sir, I, I, I insist, you must be quiet. I insist. It, it's my meeting. It's my meeting, and it's the meeting of the board in public. It's not a public meeting. I know what you're asking for, but you keep interrupting people who are trying to tell you things. So if you remain, this is not a discussion. I'm gonna move on.
I, I do, I would encourage you to contact law enforcement. That's the best advice I can be, yeah. That's the best I can tell you, all right?
Good luck protecting children. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, well, not to continue this, but since he left the room, but for the benefit of everybody else, you know, protecting children is about protecting children, but we're not going to violate the law, you know, with, and, uh, other students' rights. And, and, and I'm sure something was done to the other individual. I have no idea, and it's really not, not my business to know that, but it's, and it's not his, unfortunately, either. That's between this, that student, the administration, and that student's parents. And that's, you know, that's the way the law reads.
And what I can say is that the code of conduct was followed and discipline according to the code of conduct was applied. And you're absolutely right, we cannot, uh, disclose that.
I mean, I, I, I certainly feel for him, and I understand his frustration, but, you know, because, you know, I, I, you know, I, I object to people coming here and, and implying that we're stonewalling because we're not telling him what we're legally not able to tell him. It's not like we don't want to tell him. It's not, you know, and that's why we're stonewalling him. You know, we have, we have legal responsibilities to carry out. And, you know, and as I said, if the roles were reversed, that's what he would expect that protection to be afforded to his child, so...
Right, and, and just to be clear, that yes, Debbie did direct the phone call to the proper place, and he did receive answers at the building level and at the central office level, but he doesn't, um...
Not the ones he wanted.
Right. Or he's not able to digest that it's not within our control.
Okay, well, this, uh, brings us to the introduction, official introduction of, uh, Garrett Burnett. And I have to say, this is the most, this is the most, uh, uh, kind of eventful, uh, board meeting that we've had. I don't know if it's because you're here, but, uh, it certainly, it certainly has introduced you to, uh, what can happen, but not, doesn't happen very often, uh, in a board meeting. When, as Kevin, uh, pointed out, when it's your child, you get a little upset. And the gentleman was obviously upset, and, and I don't blame him for being upset, but we... This is not the forum to have a, a debate on it. So, anyway, Garrett Burnett, for the people in the viewing audience, uh, could you just say a little bit about yourself? You know, just for the, the...
Well, my name is Garrett Burnett. I'm seventeen years old, and I attend FDR High School. Well, I've been in the district my entire life. I'm the student body president, as well as the president of varsity club. So I think I'm in a, um, good position to be able to represent as many students as possible, uh, in front of the board here.
That's great. That's great. Thank, thanks, Garrett. So, and, and remember, in any of these discussions, if you have something to say, feel free to say. That's your, that's your job.
Yes.
Unfortunately, you don't get to vote on things, but you can have as much say as you want. You can bring things up to the board. If you have an item that you, is important to you, uh, you can, uh, bring it to the clerk, and she will give it, uh, to me, and we'll try and fit it on the agenda if it's an appropriate thing. So, you know, you're in all things other than voting, and being in an executive session, you were a full board member. And I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your opinion, uh, because, you know, Mr. Duffy and I are, like, older than dirt, and Mr. McGrath is, oh, well, you know, the only, only young people we got here are the... No, no, you don't qualify. I'm sorry.
Jeff.
We're not a union for discrimination laws, come on now.
Jeff, but Jeff, oh, okay.
Captain Kevin. Kevin's younger.
And Kevin's younger than you. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow, you're really holding up the young end there, then, uh, there. Um, also, uh, any questions you have, you know, in, in, even in the meeting, if you do quietly, um, ask Kevin. He's a wealth of information, so...
I've already been being helped along nicely throughout the meeting.
Great. Well, congratulations again, and we look forward to having a great year, so...
Hey, I'm very happy to be here.
Thanks.
Um, I would just like to welcome you, Garrett, and also reiterate that I am also the non-voting member at the table. I don't vote, uh, uh, so that it's the board's role to vote. And I want to acknowledge your parents who are here today. Um, thank you for coming and sharing in this, uh, historic moment in Hyde Park, and you must be really proud of your son. And Garrett, just not to point you out, the night that I was appointed as superintendent of schools six years ago, my parents were sitting right there with me, too, because they live a half a mile down the road. So welcome.
Thank you.
A week of applause, yeah.
Cake, cake.
Cake. Next time. We weren't, we, it just happened today.
All right. So, uh, moving on, uh, to board goals that we set last night. Can I have a motion to kind of, do we need a motion to accept them? Or are they just, yeah? Do you have a motion to accept the board goals as listed in the agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Thank you. You're good, Garrett. I would have raised my hand just because somebody said, "All in favor." I would have done, I know I would have done it.
I thought that is the reason you raised your hand.
Now, the board goals will appear...
I was never the student council president either, though.
Uh, Doug, the board goals will appear on the website, under the Board of Education. P C D.
Now that they've been adopted.
Now that they're adopted, yeah.
We don't want to be committed for what we haven't said yes to yet.
That brings us to the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I have a second. All in favor? Uh, any discussion? Yep?
Yes, I think Linda may have a couple of answers for this. Going to the bid awards, Linda? The agenda attachment, the cover letter, it's a little confusing, and I think it's missing some, like, um, some information.
I did notice that. Didn't see the comparisons of any, anybody else, or, you know...
Okay, well, I, I think we should have more information on here before we vote on this thing because it's very incomplete.
Which one is it, Gary? I'm pulling it up right now, sorry.
It's generally about, I don't know, wait, dash fifteen, if that helps.
You're talking about this...
Summary of the bids.
I don't have any information. Um, no.
You've got some vendors here that have backup proposals to identify the reasons. But you also have vendors here that don't have any backup proposals to go along with them. You have a roof repair bid that has no information.
Do we...
I don't have that.
Do we want to pull it?
I think you should pull it, because this is...
That's, um, the purchasing agent's work, so we'd have to get that info from him.
Okay. Then I recommend, without having him here and any further back information, we, we pull it. Thanks, Dan.
All right, can I make a motion to amend the consent agenda to remove item ten point ten?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? All right, that item is a merut. Now, may I have a...
One more.
Oh, oh, you have another one? Okay.
Yeah, on the, uh, check warrants, the capital project management, I know, I believe we approved it in the last board meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Contract.
Yes.
Uh, Linda, is this the, the total here? Uh, part of the purchase order for that?
The, on the...
P D contract? This is the beginning of it?
Are you looking at, on the warrant?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I don't have, I can get that information to you. I don't have the detail of the...
I can tell you it identifies as the same P O number, so I'm assuming it is...
Is that for S and O?
No, this is for construction management.
Okay, true.
It's a, it's not, that's only partially paid.
I know it's only partial payment, um... I think what I'm looking for is a little more information on the total of the purchase order. I believe it was around a hundred here or something. It seems to me that we're, we're paying out before the project's starting, which it might have started already, and I totally, I'm not sure. We're, we're getting close to, yeah, we have the project, uh, project starting.
The project has started. We don't, um, the project manager signs off when we're needed for the payments to be made.
You're talking about this one?
I'm talking about his payment.
Is he talking about this one?
Oh, and his payment, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you're talking, um, that's the payment we owed him back to January because we hadn't had the contract settled yet.
Yeah, our agreement was...
I misunderstood what you were saying. Yeah, that's payments from January through August.
For this project?
For this, for phase four, yes.
It just seems like the number's a little high with the project just to onboard. We only get some...
We usually pay the, um, the construction manager, we start paying, um, ahead of time during the planning.
Yeah, I understand that point.
And we hadn't paid them anything yet.
Right, because-
Actually, that's in the contract now anyway, that we signed, right?
That's, yeah, I mean, there, there is a payment schedule that was part of the contract, and I think that this brings us up to-
Date.
Date with his contract.
Yeah, that's through August.
He had billed it earlier or shown it receivable, but, uh, he, we weren't making any payments.
It represents a handful of invoices, like, four or five.
Eight invoices.
Eight, wow.
Yeah.
They were piling up there.
So we're leaving it in? We're not, we're not changing. All right, may I, uh, all in favor of the amended-
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. I only have a motion on removing the item.
Yeah, we, we just said, we had, we, yeah, we- No, no. He, he brought that up during discussion, after we, I called for the vote.
Kevin voted, uh, presented a motion.
And then we had the, we had the modification, and now we're gonna vote on the-
Kevin voted to amend-
Right, now you're gonna have a mo-
And now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Or the motion, no, you need a-
Okay.
You need a motion to-
Approve the amended-
Consent agenda as, as modified.
As modified.
We got somebody who moved it.
All right.
Second.
We got a second? All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I thought you were raising your hand for discussion.
Yeah, you got a discussion and you got a vote.
No, no, I was anticipating the next word.
Let's get down to... Two. We're not right, we're not. This is an official-
No, that's the eleven point one.
Hmm?
Eleven point one.
This is the official, okay. Have a motion for eleven point one, which is the official acceptance of the student board member.
So moved.
Any discussion on that? Once again, congratulations. All in favor? Thank you.
Now it's official.
Excellent.
You can have a Hershey kiss.
Where he ate mine.
I have more.
We're having administrative pause.
Technical duty or technical difficulties?
Board docs can't keep up with things when you were mad at motions, so I have to go back.
Okay.
Because it only gets you one shot at it.
Okay. That brings us to eleven point two. I have a motion for special education placements, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, Dan?
I've reviewed the pack and recommend its adoption as presented.
All in favor? Oppose, thank you. Um, may I have a motion for eleven point three, receipt and acceptance of the external audit report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
The audit committee met and, uh, recommended its approval and acceptance.
Thank you, Kevin. All in favor? Oppose? Thank you.
In case it wasn't clear from the presentation, this was the cleanest audit we've seen in twenty years.
It was, it was clean.
We're finally figuring out how to get it right.
It was clean, yeah. May I have a, uh, motion for eleven point four, authorization of, uh, signors? Is that the way you pronounce that? Sinors? Signors? For, uh, extra classroom activity fund accounts. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. I have a motion for eleven point five, volunteer coach, Victor Colazo. Zero? Lazlo, I guess that is. Colazo. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Uh, do we know what the, oh, I'm sorry, I just, I just saw it, never mind, it answered my own question. I had, the italicized words right above it tell me the answer, the question I had.
Right. All in favor? Oppose, thank you. I have a motion for eleven point six, first reading of policies, seventy-three sixty, eighty-two eleven, and eighty-two forty.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this routine, these modifications are just part of your routine policy, or were these caused by any particular event?
These, we're, um, bringing us to one up to date, uh, in terms of the, right, this one was for the-
The dollar values based on the bid.
It was on the bid, yeah.
The rest is because they haven't been reviewed since nineteen ninety-two.
Okay, okay, so just routine, okay, great.
And Garrett, just for your edification, when the policies change, they're changed by a, a committee called the Policy Committee, that's Gary and I. And then they're reworded, they're sent to the boards for review. Then we, we have a first reading, uh, we don't actually read the ones, but they've been sent around. And then, uh, at the second meeting, uh, then we adopt them. So, it's the, which is a primary, uh, uh, part of the board's job is, uh, policy, so.
And is all the policies that you're talking about under that policies tab right to the right of agenda?
They are.
They're all listed right there?
They are. And if you look there, there's a dropdown. There are, um-
Active and under consideration.
Active and under consideration, yes. So when they're under consideration, they're put there first, the, uh, Policy Committee looks at them, and then, um, they're reviewed by administrators, if that's, for instance, these were reviewed by the F and O director.
Now, Doug, there is a policy there that, in the notes, indicated that having reviewed the policy, it was deemed to be appropriate at this time without change. Do we update the review, is there a review date on that policy? Which would indicate it was reviewed now rather than going back to the last time it was revised?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. So did we vote? I think we voted. No?
No.
All in favor?
And then there'll be a second reading.
Oppose, okay, great.
We do it twice unless there's a reason to not.
May I have a motion for eleven point seven, stipulation of settlement with the H P T A?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Oppose, thank you. I have a motion for public participation.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Anybody in the audience like to address the board? Please step forward. May I have a motion to exit public participation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I said, I'm voting already over here.
All in favor? May I oppose? Thank you. There are no other matters deemed necessary. Uh, subcommittee reports. The Policy Committee did, did meet and discussed those particular policies. Any other, uh, committee?
Yeah, the Audit Committee reviewed-
Oh, the Audit Committee, right.
Yeah, so we're gonna be, uh, you know, we'll recommend, uh, appointment of our external auditor at next meeting, so.
Right. And the-
The special ed subcommittee met on the twenty-eighth. It's our first meeting of the year.
Okay.
The Health and Welfare Committee met yesterday, and there is some discussion looking at the eighth grade health program.
Okay. Gary, anything from the-
Technology Committee also met.
Oh, that's-
You were there.
You were there.
I was there, and Devo was there, yes. Technology Committee met, and, uh, we're, uh, working on things for the future, and, and I can't remember now exactly, now what to do with the bond money, for one thing, so, um, that, more on that. So, I could, so upcoming meetings. On Monday, October twelfth, two thousand and fifteen, there is no school, being Columbus Day. Uh, Wednesday, October fourteenth, at six thirty P M, is the, oh, they still say District Leader Team Meeting, here at the Administration Office. What's the official name?
I forgot what we officially named it.
Anyway, D L C is close enough.
Planning, District Strategic Planning Committee. We did, we, we'll have to look back in the notes, we did determine something, but in the calendar, it is to list as the District Leadership Team. They all know who they are. And, um, in the spirit of student involvement, we now have three, uh, students who will be joining the District Leadership Team. And, um, they will, they're receiving all, thanks Debbie, they're receiving all of the, um, information on the last District Leadership Team, including the video that shows the meeting. And thank you, Steve Hughes, for doing that, uh, for us. And, uh, so we anticipate they'll be at our next meeting and caught up to speed.
Okay, great. And the next, the next board meeting is October twenty-second, the Thursday, it's here at the District Office.
No.
No? Oh, I'm sorry, is it Violet Avenue School? Man, I'm not reading here. It is, it's, that's what it says, I know.
Doug, we also have a policy meeting on the thirteenth here, two o'clock.
Correct.
Um, is, when we start this, the roadshow, and we start going to all the schools, is there a way we can get the, um, school data, uh, very similar charts or same, um, PowerPoint? Last year, I found it very hard to follow the test scores, because it was all presented differently in each school. I was wondering, is there a way we can maybe get at least the test parts presented the same in each school? And then add on to what was done in school?
We can. Um, I think because of the timing last year, uh, of, you know, some buildings being earlier in the season and some being very late, we kind of were running on the premises of having our one academic report where we have all of our scores together. They do each have a data slide, but yes, because of the timing of them, they were different. So are you looking for the state assessment scores?
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm looking more toward the state assessment scores. So we at least, we're, we're on track following each school.
Each school, so if they want to share additional data, they can, but minimally, uh, one slide on the state test data? Yes, easy enough, thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, just suggest maybe, you know, there should be just a common template, so that, you know-
Well, it's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
For that, for that-
For that one, yeah.
You know, they can do whatever they want with their slideshow, but that, that-
Well, there is a common template for the slideshows in that they need to talk about, um, I, I may not remember the, the, but they have to have a slide on, um, character education, parent involvement, um, data-
As far as the display of the data.
But the display of the data, yeah, some consistency.
If I display it this way and somebody else displays it that way, it's just hard to kinda, it just should look the same and-
Easy enough to do.
Yeah, thanks.
We can send them a template.
Okay. There is no need for another executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Anybody opposed? No? Okay. We're done, thank you.